That is by design because we're not ready to start meeting yet.
All right, we're just waiting for Larry. He's out in the parking lot and we'll be getting started momentarily. So how are the dogs doing this year?
We're hoping for next season.
A and M, Texas A&amp;M. I guess they're still in second, second anyway. So I'm pretty happy. One lost to Alabama.
Huh? Did they lose?
One lost to number one team. That's it.
We lost to the number one team too. Of course, then we turned around and lost to Florida too after that.
As a proud University of Florida alumni, I take issue with the fact that someone said Texas A&amp;M was number two, given that we're going to the championship.
Hey, for A&amp;M to finally get televised and everything else, I'm glad they joined the SBC even if they have to take a beating to do it. Linda, Linda wants to join the meeting.
Might as well, since I'm here.
Yeah, well, you're gonna need this list of who was here. I didn't catch who was in the up in the meeting last night. I didn't even think about it. So. Come on, Larry. There's Larry.
Yeah.
Larry.
How you doing?
Good.
Long time no see.
I know.
You doing all right? What? Are they back?
They're good.
All right, Larry.
Good, good.
Doing good.
Yeah.
All right, since it's five after six, we'll go ahead and call the order, our regular town council meeting for December 2020. And we'll begin with our moment of silence. Amen. Let's, we need, I need to have a motion to approve the agenda that we've got before us. Joey makes that motion. Do I have a second? Craig, seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? All right. Larry, do you need a few minutes before we do the consent agenda or are you, you good to go ahead?
I think if that was in. It was in the package that Linda gave me. I don't know.
Yeah, that should have been in there.
Yeah, I, I, I read through it.
Okay, all right. Then I can have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Joey makes that motion. You have a second? Ten seconds? All in favor? All right. You good to go? Do we have an attorney?
Mike, I'm not sure that our YouTube stream is up.
Uh oh. It says it is.
It may be the live stream link is different than the.
It could be. Let me.
It goes into that other folder after it's.
Oh, does it? Okay. We'll have to correct that. It looks like we may have handed out the wrong link for that. Trying to find it in another browser real quick. I've got two people watching it.
For what it's worth, I'm able to see the YouTube link here, but I clicked on the email that went out today, so I don't know.
I've got two people watching it. That's, that's my YouTube delay. Sorry. It's gone now. All right. Well, we'll continue on. With what we've got, we'll have to address that maybe in one of our, before our next meeting. Warren, did you have an attorney report?
I don't.
Next on our agenda is our Dallas Taylor is with us tonight. He is our representative to the Raven County Water and Sewer Authority. He wanted to come in and introduce himself. First of all, we haven't had a chance to meet him yet, our new council members. He was appointed, reappointed to the position in 2019 to serve a three-year term. And he wanted to come and kind of update us on what's going on. So.
Turn four meter.
Yeah, just, yeah, it's fine.
Thank you for taking my time and seeing y'all. I haven't seen in a while. I know I haven't been to a council meeting in a while. I was talking to Mike the other day, but everything going on this year. Glad to be able to get to come. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about the Raven County Water and Sewer Authority. Just as far as an update, you know, as you've probably read and heard, of course, there have been some offers made to the city of Clayton from the county, you know, for their, their water system as of right now, that, that is not proceeding is from what I understand. I don't have a tremendous amount of detail on that, but, but I do know at this point, then it's, it's pretty well, pretty well quiet. As far as the water authority, we're rocking along fairly steadily. We've got the north plant, south plant. Both are full operation. We are facing some issues right now with being able to service our south plant at Lake Raven, just from the pure need, particularly from the city of Clayton and their demands on our system. It's been pretty, pretty hectic lately for the authority and our staff and our equipment, just to keep up with the demands from them. We have a contract to, to provide 36 million gallons a month to the city of Clayton. And they're, they've been regularly over that debate about why is, is going back and forth between us and them, but, but there are definitely some water loss there. But other than that, we are, we have had our monthly meeting this Tuesday, this week, and we have some plans in place to address that. Our engineers, Brendan Thompson, we're, say, we, they are formulating some plans to make sure that, that we can keep, keep supplying, you know, the water that's needed. But be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, but water sewer business is pretty, pretty low key.
When will you have sewer in the fall?
When will you have sewer in the fall? I don't know. I don't know. That's, I'm hoping to get water here first. You may be in a bigger need of sewer. I don't know, but last time I was here, I believe it was just been, it was in 2019, late 2019, that I talked about the, the south loop. You know, number, number two, the first priority, the authority would love to get a redundancy line between the north and south plant. The second thing on, on the list of, of wishes would be to complete a south loop from Shady Lane on 0441 Shady Lane, come out at the double bridges and then loop back north. Maybe there could be some opportunities to get, get something further south towards Little Falls. But you gotta have a way to treat sewer and there's, there's nothing down here as of yet, but but stay tuned. There's some, there's some things in the work in the county on the south end for a potential wastewater plant. There's, it's slow, it's slow moving, but there's, there's, there's probably some hopeful talk about that. Any other questions?
Those, so y'all, y'all have to service all of Clayton's needs from the south plant or do you have an option to service any of it from the north plant?
Well, we can, every ounce of water that the city buys right now comes from the south plant. That redundancy line would go a long way, being able to transfer water back and forth. Right now, there's no set system to feed water from the north plant. That was a point of contention between the city and the water authority in the past before I was involved. And the, you know, statements were made that the city did not want any water from the north. So they get all of it from the south. Now, I can tell you, if the demands that the city are putting on us continue, they're not gonna have the choice. We won't have to come up with some, with some plans to get some water from the north. It's just matter, you know, just a matter of that. So that they've had the luxury of saying no, but you know, we'll see if that continues. Yeah, I, I know there have been some, some talk, but it's not a lot of talk, but the county does have eyes on putting a wastewater treatment plant in the south part of the county. Brendan Thompson, Sam Back, Chamber of Water Authority and myself met with the mayor, Mike here last week, just to sort of give him a get asked just for an update on that. You know, as of right now, I can tell you that's a, that's probably a, there's a lot to get worked out about that yet. But, but at least it seems to, you know, and the county is looking to play that investment.
I think that'd be a lesson, you know, with that eventually in place and be one of my way of thanking.
Yeah, if we can get it done, that the city's blue ball, I'll do anything that I can. I do appreciate being the point by the city's blue ball. I do certain work already. Trying to get some things done and staying informed and I do appreciate. He found you by the evening. I'm happy to, Mike got his cell phone. Happy to get you in touch with everybody or answer any question.
We appreciate you representing us Dallas people.
Yeah, we do. And I hope y'all can work that out, some kind of agreement to be able to service some of Clayton's needs out of that north plant. I know there was considerable amount of money spent right there. That would, seems to me would take a lot of pressure off the south plant and benefit in the long run, benefit everybody. It's a shame that it didn't work out.
Well. Well, it is, it's one of, as far as me having to work it out, it's gonna come down more to if you want water, we want to get it more than you get it.
Yeah.
Period. You know, there's, city Clayton has their issues that they need to work on. And the water authority has issues we have to improve, you know, too, with the two-way street. You know. Losses will have to be threats.
Yeah.
Or you, you know, no matter what amount of water you can buy, if losses are high enough, it's a, it's a no-win situation for everybody involved. Maybe. It'll get worked out.
I hope so. That water loss in Clayton, you know, ongoing thing for years and years and years. Maybe they'll get a handle on this one of these days.
And I do believe we have, man, I mean, went to the city council meeting the other night, and I do truly believe that they're, that they're working with them. I do. I think they're facing a big challenge. They've got pipes and railings, they've hundreds of lawyers. I think there's a little more to think to do, but there's a whole lot of things they have to have to challenge. So you gotta, you gotta give them credit. I know they did find, I was told that they did find a leak this, this past week, 70 something hundred gallons a day. In that space. So, you know, it's, I'll take up any more time, call me.
All right. Thank you for coming in and go.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda is the inmate housing update. Do you have an update for us?
Yeah, I actually spoke with the, with the Raven County Department of Labor and we're gonna meet up again Monday.
Okay.
Better by the way.
Okay, sounds good. All right. New business, we're gonna open the sealed bids for the the Highway 441 building, the also known as the Zula Center or the Art Center or Turkey Power Building, several names. So, and Linda's gonna open those and give us the.
How many do you have?
I have four total bids that were received by noon today. Did not have any that tried to come in after that. Everybody got their bids in on top. So I'm just gonna randomly open.
Happy for Christmas.
The first bid that we have.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Fountain wants to know about the procedure, kind of wants to revisit, just to clarify. The, the statement is that we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to reward it, award it to the highest responsible bidder. I was speaking with Warren earlier today and the term responsible bidder can be, can, can kind of be somewhat narrowed down to someone that's gonna do a project that fits within what, what y'all envision for the town to be. So I keep using the, the idea of maybe a car lot there might not fit, but a retail outlet or a micro hotel something like that would. So there's some, one can put in a lot, a lot better than I can about that nuance with that response, being responsible bidder. One only gave us was that you wouldn't want to, if you had two bids that were very close together and the higher one was a plumbing company that wants to come in and do a restaurant, and your next lower bid was a hotel company chain wants to come in and do a hotel, they would be the more responsible bidder because they've got experience doing that. So, thank you, Mr. Smith. So that's kind of what we're, we're talking about. As y'all, as we hear it read out, we'll see what, what we come up with, so.
What was your first?
Okay. First one is, the bidder is Stefan, I'm probably gonna butcher the name, Kuehner, K U E H N E R Z.
Okay.
The amount of the bid is $111,000. Proposed earnest money and $1,000 proposed timeline for closing four weeks. Anticipated use of building as a cafe, restaurant, and retail. Estimated time to begin such use is second quarter of 2021. Okay, the second bid is David and Paula Wonders. Bid amount $201,050. Bid amount $201,050. Cause due diligence of thirty days. Earnest money to be negotiated. Timeline for closing as soon as worked out in ten-day negotiations with town after due diligence. Anticipated use upstairs retail, outdoor gear, and information, canoes, tents, et cetera, basic food items, milk, eggs, et cetera, mountain gifts, t-shirts, hats, et cetera, cold drinks, geared toward town people, travelers on my way, tourists in area campgrounds. Downstairs office space to rent. Timeframe to begin such use is spring or early summer of 2021. And next bidder is Hudson River Trading Company. Amount of bid $220,000, twenty percent down, remainder based on bank appraisal and rate. Due diligence thirty to forty-five days. Earnest money $5,000 within five days of binding agreement. Proposed timeline for closing within thirty days after due diligence is complete. Anticipated use event center, dining and food services, retail services and sales oriented to the outdoors. Estimated timeframe to begin use is eight to fourteen months based on plans permitting and contracting. Buyer is Paul Burns. Purchase price $300,000 cash, five percent condition to be paid by seller to buyer broker. Seller's intentions are to develop the property in two phases. Phase one consists of constructing twelve to fourteen hotel-type rooms, depending on space within the existing center building. Phase one will include improving the exterior of the main building and landscaping for the property. Phase two will consist of adding a two-story L-shaped building to the existing terrace level. This will include additional rooms and parking at the terrace level, making it ADA compliant. Projected income for phase one would be $20,000 per month at five percent hotel mental tax, creating a thousand dollars in additional revenues for town's little balls. Additional tax revenues at seven percent for sales tax accounting, they will generate projected income of $1,400 per month. Phase two projects would be similar to phase one revenues. Property tax volume for the first year after purchase will be subject to purchase price guidelines as established by Georgia guidelines. Subsequent property tax volume will be reassessed by tax, maybe counting taxes as your ops. This will be on a different, excuse me, format, so I think that we have closing on or before January 31st. Earnest money $5,000 within five days of binding agreement. Due diligence thirty days from binding agreement. I think that.
They have their estimated date of beginning activities.
Do you not see that?
Okay.
I believe they.
Is that the unique?
I don't think we need it. I was just curious.
So.
All of that would depend upon due diligence or whatever that, with any of them that they might do as much after we think it's wrong.
If, if I could chime in on that, Joey, you're, you're exactly right, which is we, we ask for this information to assist in evaluating the responsiveness of the bidder and, and those types of things, but the way that the conditions of sale were worded in the ad is basically just an auction as the price. And then we have the right to reject all sales and cancel, or all bids and cancel the sale or, or award it to the highest responsible bidder. And from there, it triggers a ten-day period to enter into a purchase and sale agreement. So we have ten days to reduce writing and a lot of those terms are something that would get worked out through that process. If there's not a binding agreement within ten days, then we have the ability to cancel the sale or reject the remaining bids or consider the, the second highest bid. So I, I think that'll get worked out there. If I heard Linda correctly though, the proposal here was five percent paid by seller to buyer's broker, which really means that that bid is $285,000 net. Not that that, you know, really affects the bid that much, other than to say that's really the purchase price that they're offering.
Can I, your second highest bidder was 220?
Correct.
Okay. Did that one have a real estate agent or anything involved with it? Did not?
No.
Okay.
Okay, the next.
And typically now, sometimes, you know, that, the brokerage fees are, are negotiable, you know, and that, that's not etched in stone that the, that the seller pays the brokerage or the buyer pays the brokerage. That's one of those items that's typically can be negotiated. So if we chose to, I've seen cases in my experience where a lot of times it's divided, for example. Half of it's paid by the seller, half of it's paid by the, by the buyer, just as a, an example of, you know, but that is a negotiable item in a lot of contracts, so that's just something you ought to keep in mind.
It is. Larry, it is. And so, miling point, it doesn't affect this here, but if one bid was 220 and the other bid was 225 with a fifteen, or with a five percent brokerage fee, then you'd get in the way which one was higher, but in this instance, even if the five percent comes off, it still remains 285. And so it, clarify that.
Yeah, I understand. There's a considerable difference there, so, yeah, I realize that.
So we've opened the bids, so the next item on the agenda is to evaluate and decide, see if y'all want to award that, award the bid tonight.
Do you want a motion? I'll make a motion to award the bid tonight.
So, I'm, I'm fine with that. Just wanted to see what, what, if there's any discussion, what the discussion is and if y'all have any questions. I believe some of our bidders are here.
I have a question.
Okay.
So I heard ten days due diligence. I would sure, the attorney said something about ten days.
Now, ten days, we, we, once the bid is awarded, we're gonna take ten days to work out an arrangement on the purchase agreement, on like when the closing's gonna be by, about how much due diligence you think you need, stuff like that. We're gonna negotiate that, even the, the earnest money will be negotiated in that, in that process. So, and we'll, if we need to, we can go, we'll have to go into executive session to discuss that, what the town wants for myself, Linda and Warren to do during those ten days. They'll have to come back in a special call meeting to accept that or reject.
Gotcha. And then they'll have due diligence period to.
If that's what they negotiate into.
What's negotiated.
Yeah.
And if they go through the due diligence and decide not to purchase it, or the bid changes or something, then, then.
We have to make the decision what we wanted to.
Yeah, tonight, at that point, this council will have to make another decision whether we reject all other bids and, and close the, the sale or if we go to the next bid in line and award, you know, decide to award. That's a decision for later on. My, I would probably, my feeling on it was that we would probably go to this, the next bid in line if, if the first one was to fall through.
Okay, cause I've been on this two other times before. That was the second and that never came up again, so.
Right. So, but that would, that would definitely be up to the council. That's why I can't speak for them, how they're gonna vote at that time, so. Are there any, any discussions, any thoughts?
I'm pretty glad that we got four bids. I think that, and I feel very, very, very good about all of these bids that have come in. This has been, it's been very much of a learning curve for, for all of us, which has been some of the fallout that you've, that you've experienced though. And we're getting there and I feel really, really, really good about this and I feel good about all of these uses that are proposed for it, so.
Right.
I like the sound of Mr. Burns' bid and proposal because I feel like a motel-type operation would allow the little falls to, to become a destination point once again.
Right.
And if you become a destination point, that means somebody stays overnight and typically they knock around for a day or two and spend money hopefully in, in our town. And for that reason, I, I like the sound of Mr. Burns' proposal and his, his deal is, is what I would think I would be inclined to wanna try to do, try to make happen.
I'll make a motion to go to the ten-day period for Paul Burns.
Paul Burns.
My second.
All right. We have a motion in the second. We have, I don't think there's gonna be any more discussions, so all in favor? It's unanimous. All right. We, we will award that to Paul Burns and we will begin the ten-day process momentarily. All right. We'll move on to our proposed meeting dates. Do y'all have those in front of you? We'll publish these for anybody that is, thank you.
I've got a great video.
Okay. We'll publish these meeting dates on the website and they'll probably be on the front door at some point for a while. Do I have a motion to accept these dates as, as presented? Or do we need to change some of them? I mean, we can, we can move them.
We can, yeah. I'm, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Craig makes that motion.
Just, just one question. Are they, are they typically, the way we're doing it now, the first Thursday after the first Tuesday?
No, we pushed, actually pushed them back because that's creating so much strain. To, many times, as much stuff as Linda has to, has to pull together, if, if you have a meeting that's only three days later, it's, it's really pushing her. So some of them are the same, this, I think they're almost all of it.
Yeah, can I?
First, yeah.
So, so they're all either the second Thursday or in the case of, if there's five Thursdays in the month, then, then the only one that's not the second Thursday was July, just to give people the July 4th week to travel or whatever. So that's the only one that's different right now. For the proposed workshop is the last Thursday of every month, except for November, which fell on Thanksgiving. So that leaves them, you know, at least two weeks.
Okay. So that explains the blue star.
Yes. Those are the two, two blue stars. So I did want to mention that in case, you know, you wanna do just the second Thursday of the month. But, and the, like the financial report, one reason is like, I don't even have the bank statements until usually the fifth or, you know, sixth of the month. So like in the case of a council meeting that falls on the third, I mean, I can do a financial report, but it's not gonna be, you know, reconciled. And same with the police and fire, you know, when we're trying to get the agenda out a week ahead of time, they don't even have their full month of numbers yet until the end of the month, so. If y'all are not opposed to it, it would be helpful to, to push it, you know, just a week, an extra week.
Yeah. Yeah, we wanted to, we really want to be able to get the agenda out to the public sooner than sometimes it's been the day before. And we still have change, change is still happening, but we want to get it out there so the public will have it, so.
Same with water. They're, you know, they're not reading meters till the end of the month, so they can't get their calculations for their, you know, water loss and that kind of thing.
Right. So, so we have a motion to accept these, these dates?
I think Craig made the motion.
Craig made that motion. Okay. Do we have a second? Larry seconds. All in favor? Passes without, with Joey speaking accent out of the room. All right. There's not really any mayor's comments. I believe that Deb is gonna have you.
An announcement to make, yes.
Um, do you want to wait until after executive session to make that? Okay. So Deb will have an announcement for us and the town, and, but she'll make that after our executive session. Okay, so let's turn this over to public comments real quick. If anyone has anything they'd like to say.
I just want to say the town looks great. Good job, mayor. That made me nervous, seeing you putting those lights out by yourself.
By myself. It was kind of fun, it was.
The tree looks awesome.
Yes, public comment.
Um, well, just in terms of like the DVA and what our next, what y'all want the next step to be with the DVA on since, you know, it looks like we got this one taken care of. So we would like some directions from the city council as to what y'all want us to do next. You know, of course, we're thinking the Rock House, is that what it's called? No, the.
No, that's wrong.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, that, you know, so if that's what y'all want us to focus on next, or just give us some direction.
Okay.
So, our, our next meeting is Tuesday, but, you know, I don't know if you want to have anything ready for us? Any ideas by that meeting, or if I want to just hold off and wait until January?
Yeah, we'll play with it for January.
I just want to plant that bug in your ear that that's something that we talked about at our last meeting and, so. Let's know what you want us to do. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bill.
All right. Any, any other public comment? If not, I'm gonna be moving our meeting attendees out into the waiting room. It's gonna take me just a little while to do that. So, all right. And then we'll, after our executive session, we'll invite everybody back in. If you lose your connection, try logging back into the meeting on Zoom and we'll see if we can't get you back in later when we're done with the meeting. So stand by.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Craig makes a motion. Executive session, executive session's gonna be for, related to property, real estate more specifically, so.
Just a little.
Okay. I have a second. Larry seconds. All in favor? All right, here we go. It's gonna be. It's not an easy way to do this. Oh, I think I just put Warren in there. Sorry, Warren. You weren't supposed to go in the waiting room.
Yeah, no worries.
All right, let me, I want to verify some things. Check your streams. Yeah, that's something I have to do. I'm gonna have to end that stream.